Time to reconvene, gentlemen, ladies. Welcome back. Our planning meeting is now back in session. Our next, Peter, you want to introduce the next speaker?
Yes, Council, Ken Wilson, your coastal engineer, is here from Aptim Coastal Planning and Engineering of North Carolina. As you recall, as your budget this year, Ken was authorized to conduct a feasibility study and beach assessment report. And he's here today to give the report on that and to talk to you about what might be next. And as he finishes his report to seg right in, I have invited Doug and Andrew Carter from Charlotte to come and speak to you about the services they provide to the other municipalities in the county, as well as Dare County, in planning for a beach nourishment project, the financial aspects of that. One thing I'd like to say, too, is that we've been in constant communications with the county manager and county finance officer about funds that are available through the beach nourishment fund that, of course, is funded by occupancy tax. We will not know until tomorrow, when they've finished running their numbers, what type of funds will be available from that fund in year four from now, or year three, or year six from there, et cetera. And the second part of that is we will not know how the county might decide to divvy those funds up between priority projects in the county. So whatever you're thinking about as we move ahead from today, bear in mind, we're not sure yet what other type of match might be available from the county fund to work against as far as raising revenues with the town if you do decide to move ahead with a beach nourishment project. So with that, I'll introduce Ken.
Thanks, Peter.
Morning, Ken.
Good to be back up here. I've been up here, I don't know, the last, well, in the month of February, I think I've been up here talking to one of the communities or the other each week in the month of February. But I think this is the sunniest it's been in the four trips I've made. So thanks for the sunshine, appreciate that. Yeah, as Peter mentioned, I want to go over this vulnerability assessment and beach management plan that we put together. You know, the real goal here is to try to objectively look at assessing areas along the town that are vulnerable, that may warrant some sort of replenishment project. Obviously, you all are well aware of the dynamics of the coast. When we had first gotten involved with the other three towns in the northern part of Dare County, back in 2013, 2014 or so, there was discussion with the town of Southern Shores. And at the town, the shoreline was in really healthy shape. There was no need for a project in Southern Shores. So the towns of Duck, Kildaloe Hills, and Kitty Hawk moved forward with their project. By the time that project got ready to go to construction, there was a hotspot down on the south end of town that had developed. And we were able to step in and put a little bit of sand in that area to hold the line, if you will. So we understand those dynamics. And this study was really to try to take a look at all the data that exists and figure out, you know, kind of do a real apples-to-apples comparison across the whole shoreline of, is a beach project warranted, first of all? And if it is, you know, is it the entire town? Is it a part of the subsector of the town? What kind of fill densities would be warranted? So that's really what we tried to do. We tried to use some of the lessons learned from the work we've done with the other three towns and develop a really solid, objective look at the oceanfront and southern shores. So today, I want to give you just a little bit of background introduction, give you sort of our understanding of what the project is. I'll briefly go over the vulnerability analysis. Don't want to go too much into detail. There's a lot of technical information in that report. I'm happy to answer any technical questions. Just trying to keep it topical as far as what I'm going to say. And then whatever you have questions on, I'll be happy to dive in. We'll talk about how we came up with the formulation of the actual project extent, where along the beach we're recommending beach fill. And then we'll talk about how much volume, how we came up with these volume densities. That obviously leads into cost. We'll talk about schedule. And then we'll talk about some recommendations. At any point in time, if, you know, if you all have questions, you know, feel free, you can, you know, ask right away, or we can wait till the end. It's really your preference. So this introduction, background information, again, there were two parts of the study, figuring out the areas that were vulnerable, and then developing a beach management plan to manage the areas along the shoreline where beach nourishment was warranted. The stated goals of beach management plan, this is really important for us. As the consultants, we need to understand, you know, why are you all interested in this? What are the goals of the town? What are you trying to accomplish? So that when we're looking at prioritizing different aspects of the analysis, we understand, you know, the root of why you're moving forward with this. So our understanding of the town's stated goals here are to provide a reasonable level of storm damage reduction to public and private development, mitigate long-term erosion that could threaten public and private development, recreational opportunities, and biological resources, and maintain a healthy beach that supports valuable shorebird and sea turtle nesting habitats. Those are our understanding of what the town's goals are in pursuing this type of a project. Two other factors, there's last two bullets on the screen there that I want you to keep in mind. The beach management plan, as we're trying to formulate the best plan for the town, we're also trying to coordinate the efforts for Southern Shores with the neighboring communities. We've seen the success that Kildaloe Hills, Kitty Hawk, and Duck had, leveraging both funding from Dare County and working together to minimize some of the design and permitting costs, to speed that process up, and ultimately to save a significant amount of money on the mobilization cost. So we're trying to figure out how we can fit this project into a schedule that's sort of already been set up for those other three towns and the maintenance of their projects. And we've also been considering the establishment eligibility of the town for FEMA reimbursables. You all are very well aware of the impacts of storms here on the coast. We're just coming off of the impacts of Hurricane Florence. There are a couple of different public assistance categories that FEMA can provide to any municipality, really. But on the coast, and when we consider the beaches, there's really two types of reimbursable costs. There are impacts that have affected the dune that create a vulnerability in the town. Those are sort of emergency costs that they can come in and help you rebuild the dune. It's not really a long-term management plan. It's really just a stopgap until you can get something else in place. The other interesting program through public assistance that FEMA has that's relevant to this type of project is category G. So that's if you have an engineered, designed beach, and a storm comes in and takes a significant amount of that sand, and you have surveys that you can show how much volume you've actually lost because of this federally declared, presidentially declared disaster, you can be reimbursed the cost of putting that sand back on place, including engineering costs, survey costs, and actual construction costs. So we've worked on a number of those projects. But one of the things, the reason this is important to think about at this point in time is we want to develop a project that has an established design that if you build this project and the project is impacted by a storm, you know, sometime after construction, that you've done the things necessary to be eligible for those types of funds. So I just want to keep that in mind as we go through this. So the project location, obviously, we're looking at the entire stretch of the coastline, the ocean coast of the town of Southern Shores, from Kitty Hawk to Duck. These profiles, I believe this is figure three in the report. A lot of times, we'll talk about stations, those profile stations. To the general public, usually, they don't mean a whole lot. We have, in the report, as many times as possible, tried to associate road or some sort of a local landmark with those stations. But in terms of analysis, this is the way that we refer to these areas. One other thing to touch on while I have this map up is that the analysis is based on beach profile surveys that were done in December 2017. I know that council has received some questions about the analysis and why certain areas of town is not included, maybe some things that have happened over the last six months that may be changing the performance of the beach out there, or what's going on with some of the dunes in certain areas. The data that was used for this study is data that was collected in December 2017. So that's when we read about the results and the vulnerabilities, that's really the point in time we're locking into place. All right, so a little bit about this vulnerability analysis. We use a model called S-Beach. It's basically a model that the Corps of Engineers developed. It allows us to take a given condition with a beach profile in any place along the beach and create a storm to impact that profile. And then it shows us how that profile would be impacted by that specific storm. The storms that we've used for the design of the Duck and the Kildaloe Hills project is sort of a hybrid of Isabel, Hurricane Isabel. When we went through and did a sort of extremal analysis, we were looking at five- and 10- and 20-year storms. And rather than getting into a lot of that sort of analysis that doesn't necessarily, it's hard to translate to the public, we decided to go with something in the lines of an Isabel-type storm because it had a pretty long duration. It had really high wave period, wave energy. The water level wasn't super high in that storm. So we use those factors to try to generate a storm that people understand they're used to. They can see in their mind the effects of that. And then in this analysis, one of the things that we wanted to do was, if we just look at Hurricane Isabel, the water levels that occurred during Hurricane Isabel were based on sea level in 2003. So for this study, we actually increased sea level to 2018 levels. We're still using that Hurricane Isabel storm. And then we also looked at increasing sea level up to 30 years beyond present, 2048. So we're looking at a couple, those scenarios there that are listed on the left-hand side are a number of different storms, basically just varying the degree of sea level rise from current range up to 30 years into the future. One interesting point to take into consideration is that you guys all understand generally, in the course of a month, you've got a spring high tide where you get the highest and the lowest tidal range. You have neat tide, which is where you have the lowest high tide and the lowest low tide in the range over the course of a month. So the days in which Hurricane Isabel impacted the coast was somewhere between that spring and that neat tide. We also looked at what if the storm were to have occurred during the days where you were experiencing a spring tide? And if you look at scenario three and scenario four, that's basically what you'd be looking at. In terms of today's sea level rise, if the storm hit at a comparable time in that tidal cycle as it did for Isabel, the still water water level without any waves would be about 5.85 feet. If it hit during a time of month where you were dealing with a spring tide, you'd be at that 6.71 feet of water level. What's interesting is if you jump down to scenario 11, the next line, and look at that water level all the way over to the left, it's actually lower than if the storm were to hit in 2018 on a spring tide than if it were to hit on a normal tide 30 years from now. So when you consider sea level rise, this was kind of an interesting, you know, exercise for us to look at. It really depends, you guys are used to this vulnerability, this variability in tides, from the high tide to the low tide, there's three or four feet every day, you see that variation. Throughout the month, there's variation. So when we're talking about sea level rise in terms of 30 years out and some of the higher predictions for greenhouse gases and that sort of thing, we're really just talking about a change of frequency in things that you already see on a day-to-day basis or on a monthly basis now. Hopefully, that makes sense. The vulnerability analysis, so when we finish that S-Beach analysis, we're looking at those profiles. Basically, when we simulate that storm, we're able to figure out an impact point along that profile. We plot that impact point on each one of our profiles, and then we basically just connect the dots along those profiles. As we connect those dots, we create a line on these maps. And we've published, as an appendix to the report, you've got these maps that show the entire shoreline and the three different storm scenarios that we simulated with that model. What we do after that is typically, we'll go in and we'll look at, are there, does that line run through any pools, any structures, and kind of get an understanding of how many of those structures are impacted? Are they all sort of situated in one particular area? Are they spread out throughout town? So those results are included in the report. One of the other things that we did with that vulnerability study was to look at how the dune is impacted. So not only where, not only what structures might be impacted by that storm, but also when you look at the peak of the dune, the crest of the dune, which profiles are actually, which profiles show that that dune is actually lowered, that crest of that dune is actually lowered? It's another sort of data point that we can use to say, all right, well, this dune is strong enough that when that storm hits it, the crest elevation of that dune doesn't change. It doesn't fall at all. So that's an area where, right now, they've got a pretty healthy dune in front of those structures. Whereas if we see the crest of that dune kind of crumble and lower, that's an area, thank you very much, that's an area where there are some vulnerabilities. So I've got all these up here. If we need to refer back to them, we certainly can. But those are an appendix to the report as well. All right, so on the upper left-hand side is the northern boundary of the beach. All right, so the yellow lines are the beach profile data where we have survey data that go all the way from behind the dune, over the dune, across the beach, and out to about 30 feet of water depth. So that's the data that we use to simulate that storm impacting the coast. It's probably actually off of this map because the purpose of this map is really to show you those lines that are running parallel to shore. So what I mentioned was, we can figure out an impact line on that profile. And let's see. That impact line for one scenario is where that blue line crosses that yellow line there. And we have that impact point on every one of those yellow lines. So we connect those dots, and we see where those lines impact a house. And we can say, we can then use those lines to say, okay, well, in this area, these houses could be vulnerable to that specific storm scenario that we've simulated. So in this map, none of those structures that you see, either on the upper or lower pane, are impacted by any of those storm scenarios that we ran. This is the northern part of the town. Again, the data we're using is December 2017 data. If we go here to this next line, you can see, especially down in that lower pane, that you're starting to see that line intersect some of those structures. And that's what we're using to figure out where those vulnerabilities along the town are. All right, so once we understand where these vulnerabilities are, we need to figure out a project extent, all right? Do we need a project along any of the beach? Do we need a project along all of the beach? Or do we need a project along part of the beach? Okay? So we looked at a bunch of different things. We looked at the background erosion rates. One of the things I want to say about the erosion rates is that we've got long-term data that goes back to 2004, 2005 from about Third Street South to the Kitty Hawk boundary. The Corps of Engineers, back in the early 2000s, were collecting beach profile surveys for a couple of years. So we can go use their profiles and the more recent profiles that our firm has conducted and see some long-term trends over the course of about 10 years, I guess it's about 13 years, in the southern part of the town from Third Street South. In the northern part of the town, there are two or three prof, I guess the northern 2,000 feet of the town, we had surveyed back in 2013 when we were looking at a project in the town of Duck. So we have a couple of profiles on the very northern part of town. And then there's a small section, probably between Third Street and maybe Eighth Street, where we only have one data set, and that's the 2017 data set. So we really, we can tell you what it looked like in 2017. We can't really say what it's done in the last 10 years based on that data. So we looked at these erosion rates. We looked at that vulnerability analysis that I just talked about. We also looked at comparatively the amount of volume of sand on any given profile. So the way that we do this is we create a line that's on the backside of the dune and sort of draw a line in the sand on the backside of the dune. And then we look at a water depth of about 24 feet. And we basically draw a wedge to compute how much sand is inside of that wedge, okay? And we can compare that volume on any given profile to say, all right, well, you know, these profiles have relatively more sand than these profiles do down here. And we have an understanding of where we have high volumes, where we have low volumes. The next thing that we did is I talked about using that S-Beach analysis. We looked at which profiles the top of the dune was impacted by. So wherever those profiles are, where the top of the dune was cut off, we said, okay, well, those volumes that are on those profiles aren't enough volume to keep that from happening. So we want to figure out which ones were not impacted. And that, the average of those profiles that were not impacted is sort of our baseline. That's the volume that we want to get after. So at that point in time, it's about figuring out, okay, well, we know we want this much volume on any given profile to provide us the protection we're looking for, which profiles don't have that much volume on it. And that's how we get into the project extent.
On the erosion rates, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, sir.
What you're talking about, based on data from 2015, plus or minus, is that different from the regulatory erosion rates?
Yes, so the regulatory erosion rates are based on aerial photos only. They're looking at aerial photography, and they're digitizing where that wet-dry line is on the aerial photos. And they're going back about 50 years. So they simply use an end, it's called an end-area method, where they're looking at their oldest data set and their newest data set and looking at the change over, you know, over the course of that time. They've got 50 years of data. They take that change, divide it by 50, and they come up with a feet-per-year rate.
Exactly.
Right, it's basically the rate that the shoreline is moving over long-term, and that's what you use to do the setbacks.
Now, based on the science that you're discussing here and the regulatory erosion rates, which had huge impacts, is there any correlation? Are they close at all?
I mean, if you have areas where that regulatory number is higher, a lot of times, you'll see some of that. But when you're looking at that long of a stretch, you know, we see some trends that occur. Like, take, for instance, when we looked at the trends over a long period of time for that south end of Southern Shores, where we put in that beach fill, over the long term, there was actually a positive volume change rate in that area. But if you have data from 2015 to 2017, and you looked at just that area, you saw massive losses of volume in that area. So we're trying to look at both, you know, what we have as long-term data and, you know, short-term data and understand some of those variabilities that occur.
Okay, the key, I think, for anybody who's reading your report, your study, is that you're talking about two different animals there. The regulatory erosion rate versus the, based on your science.
Correct. Correct. And what we're looking at is all of the volume that's changing from the dune all the way out to that minus 24-foot contour. You know, any of you all that walk the beach on a regular basis know that you can walk out before a storm and after a storm, and where that wet-dry line changes dramatically. And over the course of, you know, the summertime, it's much different than it is in the wintertime. So what we're trying to do by surveying all the way out to minus 24 feet is to capture that variability. No matter when we do that survey, you know, sometimes the sand might be way up on the beach. Sometimes that sand might migrate out and be in that bar, and you can't see it if you're walking on the beach. But we want to capture all that sand so we know how much sand is in the system. Those regulatory erosion rates or setback rates don't really capture that variability.
Okay, that helps me personally in understanding all this. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. I mean, I think the stopgap of where, if you were looking at the way they do that analysis over the short term, it probably wouldn't mean much. But the reason that they feel comfortable with it is because they have such a large data set. And they can say, you know, well, some of that variability is built into that long term, and that's what they're using to develop those setback lines. So the project extent, how did we come up with the extent of the project that we're looking for? So what we did, like I mentioned, we were looking at where the top of the dune is vulnerable, where the top of the dune actually stood up to the storms that we were simulating, figuring out which profiles along the beach stood up to those scenarios, and figuring out how much volume is in those profiles. And that was sort of our goal, to be able to provide that much volume. So let me try to give you some actual numbers, and let's see if this makes a little bit of sense. The main, we've got three parts of the fill that I want to talk a little bit about. That area that's called the main placement area is really the area that our study suggests needs additional sand. It's vulnerable. This is the area where you want to beef up your beach fill, okay? The area to the right, that's referred to as a transition area, gets into the interaction between the town of Kitty Hawk's project and this proposed Southern Shores project. So if Kitty Hawk did not have a project, we would probably just recommend putting a small taper on the south end of that main placement area, similar to what we do on the north end. There's a 500-foot taper that tapers off the fill that reduces some of the spreading losses that you have on a project like this when you build it. But down in, because that project is in Kitty Hawk, and actually, the Kitty Hawk project, the way that we've got it designed now includes that northern 1,500 feet of Southern Shore. So if you guys didn't do anything, we would still recommend the town of Kitty Hawk looking at that 1,500 feet that eroded previously. You know, you guys paid for that portion of it. There'd probably be some sort of agreement of looking at that sort of cost-sharing again on the southern part of the shoreline. But in our mind, that project is in place now, and it'll be maintained in the future. So what we ran up against when we looked at this main placement area is that we've got the main placement area that goes down to that Station 5000. The Kitty Hawk project would come up to about minus 25, plus 00. So we'd have like a 2,500-foot gap in there with no sand. And that in and of itself could create some issues with wave refraction around the two beach fills. It could create some hotspot issues in that area. So what was recommended is to provide sort of a moderate transition fill through that whole 5,000-foot southern section, really just to try to reduce the risk of creating some sort of hotspot by having a project here and a project here and a hole in the middle, okay? So that's the purpose of that transition area. And then the third part is that small taper on the north end. So I was talking a little bit about coming up with a baseline of the volume. When we look at the volume that's above the minus 24-foot contour inside of our wedge, if you will, the target for option one and option two is 846 cubic yards a linear foot. So that's how much sand we want to measure when we measure those profiles, okay? The, when we looked at the average beach fill in that main placement area, we calculate an average of 801 cubic yards a foot. So that's a deficit of 45 cubic yards a linear foot in that main placement area. That's where we come up with a fill density in the main placement area of 45 cubic yards a linear foot. It's the average that's needed in that section to get up to our goal of 846, okay? The option two that we looked at was, what if we use, it's basically looking at the sea level rise in 2018. What if we use that same 846 number? But now, instead of looking, because we know we're going to place some fill down in that transition area, what if we look at the average amount of fill in both the main placement area and the transition area? So because the transition area, those profiles have a little bit more sand on it. When we average all those, we come up with 818 cubic yards a linear foot. The difference there to get to our goal is now 28 cubic yards a feet. And we brought that up to 30 cubic yards a feet because that's sort of a minimum construction fill density that the contractors would like to see. So option one is really looking at 45 cubic yards a linear foot in the main transition area and 30, or in the main placement area and 30 in the transition. Option two is looking at 30 cubic yards along that entire area, both main placement area and transition area. And then option three, which is the more expensive one, looks at sea level rise going out to 30 years. And when we use that bigger storm, our goal jumped from 846 cubic yards to 858, which makes the main placement area, instead of 45, now we're looking at 57 cubic yards a linear foot. But we're still just putting 30 cubic yards a linear foot in the transition area, okay? Okay? I know that's a lot of numbers, it's hard to, hard to grasp just talking through it. But if you have any questions, I've got a couple of diagrams in the back of this presentation that if we have some questions, we might be able to get into that a little bit. All right, so that's, that's basically what I just talked about. Option one, 45 cubic yards in the main fill, 30 cubic yards in the transition fill. Uh, the total there is 665,650 cubic yards. Option two, 30 cubic yards all the way across the main fill and the transition fill, 492,000. And then option three is where we're looking at the 2048 sea level rise built into the storm scenario for Isabel. There we're looking at 57 cubic yards a foot, um, in the main fill and 30 cubic yards a foot in the transition fill. Um, I know those numbers, you know, you can kind of compare them to each other and that doesn't necessarily mean a, a whole lot, but as a point of reference, the, um, as a point of reference, the Kill Devil Hills project that was constructed in 2017 was about 60 cubic yards a linear foot. All right, that was the, 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 the lowest of the three projects that were constructed. The town of Ducks project was at 150 cubic yards a linear foot. So that's significant, that's, that's, you know, three, three times what option one is calling for. And the reason for that is that in general, the dune system that's in place in the town of Southern shores right now is in pretty good shape. And really what we're talking about here is, is, is nourishing the beach in front of the dune so that we don't lose any more of the dune, that the dune now has some good protective value in it. Whereas when we went into the town of Duck, or when you, you drove through the town of Kitty Hawk before that project went in, there was absolutely no dune there. Or up in Kitty Hawk where we built the project, that dune had been wiped out, lots of houses had to be moved back. Um, you know, that's kind of the state of what we were getting into. Whereas here, you guys are looking at it much more early in the process and you're able to take advantage of the fact that your dune is fairly intact and what you're really looking at is keeping enough sand in front of that dune so that you don't lose the protective value of that, that dune. Uh, so just wanted to give you that, um, you know, that, that information to kind of compare of what the other towns were looking at.
Quick question, Ken.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about the project we did piggybacked with Kitty Hawk. We put, I'm putting my numbers up on 90, 90 cubic yards per foot?
It was about 50 cubic yards a linear foot, I think.
Is that what it worked out?
In that, in that 1,500-foot stretch, I think it was about 50 cubic yards a linear foot. That's, that picture down at the bottom, that was about 50 cubic yards a, a linear foot.
Okay.
So, um, it was a little bit bigger rate, you know, as you got right under the pier and then it kind of, um, thinned out a little bit as we got up to the, to the 1,500-foot point, but on average, it was about 50 cubic yards a linear foot.
So pretty close to what we did, we're talking about with option three on a much, but a much greater, much greater extent.
Larger extent.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask you, how successful do you feel like the Pelican Watch project was in the long run? I know initially, right after you, uh, finished the work, it, the beach looked great, uh, but we had some storms since then. How do you feel about it now?
Sure. Yeah, I, I took a look at it, I guess it was maybe two weeks ago I was up there. I mean, what I, what I'm primarily looking at, especially looking at it in the wintertime, knowing that, you know, you, that dry sand beach gets pretty thin is, um, you know, what does it look like where that sand fencing is that was installed right at the base of that? And I mean, when I look at it, the sand fencing is still covered up, you know, all the way to four feet. So I know they've gained quite a bit of elevation where they put that first row of sand fencing, they put some more behind it. Um, I think some of that sand fence has started to trap it as well. So, I mean, the goal there is to, excuse me, make sure that you've got, you know, some dry sand in front of that that can continue to be trapped in that sand fencing, uh, and that you're not seeing a whole lot of loss of that dune. Um, so it, I mean, in my mind, it's, it, you know, it's performing pretty well at this point. Um, you know, on the other side, it's, it's, it's been a year and a half or so since the project was constructed. So, um, you know, there's, there's, you know, we're, we're, we're not even a third of the way through the interval here now. Uh, but so far, it, you know, I think it's doing a pretty good job of, of, you know, what it was intended to do. Um, you know, stop the scarfing of that dune and hold that dune in place.
You know, another point of reference that may help the public or citizens who aren't involved in this on a day-to-day basis is, um, when you're talking about cubic yards of sand, correct me if I'm wrong here, if you know, but I think one large dump truck holds about 20 cubic yards of sand.
I think, uh...
Maybe a little less.
I think those tandem dump trucks that almost look like an 18-wheeler hold about 18 cubic yards, uh, 18 cubic yards. I think like a, a regular, you know, dump truck you'd see running around is, is maybe closer to 12 or 10.
And again, I may be getting the, uh, cubic yards mixed up with the tonnage issue there.
Sure. But it, you're right, it is a good, a good reference point.
It's a good reference that most people can grasp.
Right.
Oh, okay, you're talking about two dump truck loads per linear foot.
Per, per linear foot of shoreline, right.
Right.
Correct. It's a lot of sand. All right, so once we've identified the project extent, once we've identified the project volumes, it's, it's an easy jump to get to costs. Okay? So, um, this is a summary that's in the executive, or this is a table in the executive summary, it's also in the actual general report. We've got our three options listed there on the left-hand side. That second column is those volumes, um, based on those three different configurations that I just talked about. Um, and then we've got the total cost all the way over to the right-hand side. Uh, that third column, permitting and design soft costs. So, um, there's going to be some costs involved in, um, you know, finalizing the design of this project, getting environmental permits in place. There's also going to be some costs, um, uh, in, um, updates to the borrow source. So when we did the project for Kitty, Kitty Hawk, Kill Devil Hills and Duck, uh, we identified two different borrow sources. One was offshore of Duck. That borrow source was pretty much used up entirely for the, the Duck project. The other one was a much larger borrow source that's off of the southern part of Kill Devil Hills. Uh, only a fraction of that borrow source was, was used. There's probably enough volume in there to build, um, this, this upcoming project in 2022, even if Southern shores, um, you know, is included in that project, there should be some sufficient volume to build that. But when you're looking at beach fill projects, the biggest thing you can do to bring down your cost is to, to get your sand as close to the, the, the project area as possible. Right now, that borrow source is off the southern end of Kill Devil Hills. So the, the, the costs that we've developed are based on bringing that sand from the southern part of Kill Devil Hills up to Southern shores and pumping it out, similar to the, the way that the projects were done in 2017 with a series of hopper dredges. During this study, we did look at, let me jump down and I'll jump back to that cost in a minute. We did look at some, some of the, uh, the, the offshore bathymetry that's available through NOAA to see if, um, there may be some additional borrow sites. So when we, the, the, the boxes that are on the screen here, these green boxes are areas that were, I, that were investigated during our study for the, for the 2017 project. So we came out here and ran geophysical surveys through these areas, we took vibrocore samples in these areas and ended up developing a big borrow site in borrow area A. This is the one off of the south end of Kill Devil Hills and north end of Naggs Head. We also developed a borrow source within this area, borrow area C, which is right offshore of the, the Duck Field Research Facility. That's the borrow site that was used. We took a couple of cores in this site out here, but the material wasn't quite beach comp, beach compatible. But given the fact that we did identify some borrow sources, some sand sources in this area, we're looking at a couple of features just to the south in this box and in this box that seem like, you know, just in general characteristics of the shoaling out there are similar to what's in area C. And so one of the things that is built into that cost is to do some investigation of these two borrow sources to see if, um, they may provide a supplemental source of sand. If those turn out to be, um, um, sources of sand that can be used for Southern shores, that would decrease the cost of the beach fill project for Southern shores. It would probably decrease the cost for Duck as well. And depending on how much sand is, 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 um, you know, mapped in that area, um, the dredger may want to use it for Kitty Hawk as well. The way that we did this the first go-round in 2017 is that each of the three towns had a permit to use all of the sand that was, that was identified in our offshore sand resource investigation. So that's the way that we would probably do this as well. Um, it worked out really good because these offshore investigations can get kind of pricey, but when, when you're splitting it three ways or splitting it four ways, um, it becomes a little bit more manageable and not quite as expensive. So there's a write-up in the report, that figure is from the report, you can read a little bit more about the sand resources and what we've looked into. But that cost of, of developing those sand resources is built into this number. You'll see no matter what, which option you go with, all three of these numbers are the same. So then we get into construction costs. These costs include both mobilization costs and the, uh, unit costs to pump this volume of sand onto the beach. Um, construction soft costs, this would be, um, engineering costs associated with developing bid packages, construction oversight of the project, uh, that sort of thing are built in there. Those numbers are a little bit variable simply because the more volume you're placing, the longer it takes for construction. And so that's, that's, that's shown there in sort of the prorated costs of the construction soft costs. Um, construction environmental monitoring costs, these are costs we built in based on the 2017 project. Um, there were some additional turtle monitoring that had to be done. Um, there was some trawling that needed to be done out in front of the dredge, uh, to relocate any, any turtles that were swimming in front of the dredge so that they could pick them up and move them to a different spot so that they weren't impacted by the dredge. Um, so those are the costs that we'd anticipate based on the types of conditions that were on the permit for the 2017 project. We've got a 10% contingency built in there and then add them all together and, and here are our total costs on the right-hand side. All right, so the last aspect of, uh, the study gets into the schedule. So what we've done here is, uh, we've set our construction date of May 2, of 2022. Uh, that would be five years after the 2017 project. The 2017 project was built between May and October 2022. So that's why we've got that five months there, that's why we have a start date of May 2022. And we've backtracked from being able to build in May 2022 all the way through our schedule. So we have set the point in time where we need to award these contracts early enough that we can get decent bids the first go-round so that we don't have to delay the project a year, which is something that happened on that first project. Excuse me. Um, and then we get into, uh, you know, planning to develop the, the bid documents in time to be able to award the project at a certain date. We've got timelines in there for state and federal permitting, the design work, that borrow area development that I talked about. It backs us up to a point about February of next year, February 2020 is probably about the time that we want to have, um, a, a, a conceptual idea of what project we're going to build and take that as well as whatever Duck and Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills are proposing and have a meeting with the, with the regulatory agencies to get this process started of starting to review, starting to develop any kind of documents, any kind of permit modifications that are necessary. But if we can start that process around February 2020, that schedule should hold all the way through.
Ken, I think it's important to highlight the fact when we talk about Kitty Hawk, Duck and, um, Kill Devil Hills, that those projects right now are maintain, that's a maintenance project for 2022.
Correct.
That's going to happen, that's already been, the money's allocate, the money is earmarked for that by the county out of the fund. So that project would occur and our P, little piece in front of Pelican Watch would occur with the Kitty Hawk project. So the concern, as he talks through, in my mind, of course, is do we, can we get money to do this project he's talking about now for 2022 or to be 2023, 2024? That's what the, the challenge will be when we meet with the county.
And, and you mentioned that earlier.
To make sure when he mentions Kitty Hawk, Duck.
Right.
That, that, that is a...
That's a rednourishment commitment on the part of the county.
Peter, the priorities of your county though, right now are Naggs Head, is it right or is that all?
I couldn't speak to that. I, I, Naggs Head has already been allocated for, but I couldn't speak to their priorities. They'll let us know something hopefully tomorrow and on throughout the month. I don't know. That's up to the county.
Now, Pelican Watch area is all the way out, not part of the Kitty Hawk, Kill Devil Hills?
Yes, correct.
Kitty Hawk project.
So that is on board to be scheduled for 2022, no question. So what he's speaking of now is a separate project.
So Ken, just, just, excuse me, just, just to kind of get, work from my mind, if we have folks in the room that are, where they're, they're part of the region not being considered, what, what is a linear foot cost if we decide you want to add 1,000 feet further north where you, where you stopped it right now?
Um...
Is there a way, using, using option two, using a, the medium-priced option?
Right. Um, uh, I might have to pull up a spreadsheet to get to that. I can give it to you while the next presenter's talking and I can get you that number, but I don't think I can do it right now.
I'm just curious, it's just so we can, I might, I might be thinking, what, what total dollars we might be looking at?
Um, well, let's see, that... I think we're like somewhere around 330,000 per 10,000, per 1,000 feet, maybe? Um, that 492,300 in general represents 30 cubic yards along 15, along 15,000 feet. I'm listening. Uh, 600,000. 600,000 per thousand foot.
So this is 2022, we have a bad, poor, y'all lose beach, you're going to come back and look at it again before we make this call up or is this what we're going to do?
That's exactly right. I, one of the things that was built into our recommenda, recommendation is to survey the, the beach, um, this coming June in 2019. Um, as I mentioned, the, uh, we know that, that, that last winter, uh, was a pretty rough winter. We've seen, you know, some of the results come back from our, our Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Duck, uh, projects, um, you know, where there's some areas that the, the volume losses are a little higher than we would have expected. Um, some of that we believe is because, you know, the first survey was in December and the second survey was in the summertime, it's only a six-month period. Uh, if we do these surveys again in 2019, we'll have about 18, 18 months of, of, you know, change. Uh, should be able to get a decent feel for if there are any other changes there. Uh, it, I, I know there were some questions about that area up at Seventh Street, some of the scarfing that's occurred there. Uh, I had gone up there just before the meeting today, took a look at it. So that, that sort of thing would be captured in those new profiles and then we would, you know, simulate that same storm or, or at least calculate the volumes that are there and see if, you know, we have fallen below that threshold to where using the same method we would suggest, you know, placing other parts of the town in that, in that area. Uh, as far as, as far as a gap between the projects, um, the town of Ducks project right now, the one that was built in 2017, the southern part of that is, is, is where the FRF property starts way up on the north side. So there's about, there's almost a three-mile gap between where the Duck project is, uh, up on the northern part of its town and where we're recommending this project start, which is around Third Street. Um, so that, that type of a gap isn't, you know, one of those concerns like the one I talked about at the southern part of the town where we'd look in at, you know, a 2,500-foot gap as opposed to a three-mile gap. The town of Duck has seen some trend of losses of volume in their southern portion of, uh, the town, like between the FRF and the town of Southern shores. Um, we're looking at updated profile surveys. Each year they survey their entire beach, not just the project area. Um, so in 2019, we'll be looking at that area too to see if, you know, there, there, you know, there's another section of town of Duck that, you know, could potentially, you know, need, need some assistance.
I don't want to interrupt you right now, but at the end of this, I'm going to have a couple of questions specific to the Seventh Avenue area, so.
Okay.
Just...
Um, let me go through this final slide with some recommendations real quick and then at that point in time, be happy to take any questions. Um, so the recommendations that were in the report, there were four. So the recommendations that were in the report, there were four of them. First, determine whether to pursue a project at all. And if you decide to pursue a project, which option should you, you know, should you pursue? Can you pursue? There's a statement in the report that basically says that, based on our assessment, based on the data from 2017, we would feel comfortable as an engineering firm standing behind any of these three options, whether it be option one, two, or three. You know, all of these options we feel would satisfy those goals that were provided in that, you know, that we showed on that first slide and would provide us, you know, some management over the next five-year course, a period of time, that we would monitor the beach, see how it performs. And all of these projects are an exercise in, you know, adaptive management. None of these beach projects, the first time they're put in, works exactly how they're supposed to work. It's never seen as a one-time event. It's seen as, all right, we're going to use the best science that we have to create a design. Mother Nature's going to have its shot at it for three, four, or five years. We're going to see what Mother Nature does to this project and five years later, when it's time to re-nurse the project or provide some maintenance in front of it to put back some of that sacrificial sand that's been washed away. Do we need more sacrificial sand? Do we need sand in, you know, higher densities in one part of town than we thought we did because there's something different going on in one part of the project area? So all of these are exercises in adaptive management, but we feel like, you know, any of those three options are a good first step at satisfying those goals that were on the beginning of the slide presentation. The second recommendation was begin coordination with the county and neighboring communities. That certainly has already been done. There's a meeting later this week to have some of those discussions with the county. Initiate financial planning. I know the Carter Group is here today. They probably tell you that, you know, you can't start soon enough to think about that. We've worked for some clients that, you know, went through this whole permitting and design process and really never had a plan in place in the back of their mind of how they were going to pay for it until it was time to bid it out. That's way too long. You know, the most successful projects that we've seen done are the ones that start planning for it even, you know, well before it's a crisis, which I feel like, you know, that really is where we are with the Town of Southern Shores right now. The dunes are in fairly healthy shape. They're providing good protection. If we can get into a maintenance cycle now where we're managing the amount of sand in front of those dunes, keeping that protection in place, that's the best way of going about that. And then final, continued monitoring of the beach profiles. Like I said, we're recommending doing that survey in July 2019. That would allow us to go back and look at some of those changes that have occurred through that 2017 project process. Are there areas, you know, outside of what we originally developed that, you know, are now vulnerable? Has the volume changed? And frankly, if you're going to move forward, having that data in place in June 2019 instead of waiting till June 2020, which, the only reason I say June is because we're on a schedule to monitor the other beach towns each June. So we could do the survey as a standalone survey at some other point of time, but, you know, again, trying to build in some of these, you know, cost-saving measures of, you know, multiple, avoiding multiple mobilizations, that sort of thing, trying to keep it on that June time track. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Yes, sir. Mr. Council.
Well, obviously, some of this is driven by a lot of the emails that we receive from residents on Seventh Avenue. Can you explain why you stopped at Third Street, basically, or, you know, why we're not discussing that portion north of the 500-foot taper?
Sure. So this is, this is one of those, one of those graphics that I talked a little bit about. So this is that graphic that we're using to define that volume that's on the profile. And again, we've come up, using that storm analysis, that S-Beach analysis, to figure out which profiles, based on, you know, that storm impact in the coast, would hold up against that storm versus which profiles we would actually see some erosion of the top of the dune. We're able to compute that average volume of 846 cubic yards or 858 cubic yards. So the volume that's represented in that yellow area there, that's that number that I'm talking about, that we would want to have 846 cubic yards per linear foot of sand in that wedge to provide the level of protection that we're looking for. When we look at the volume of sand on the profiles north of Third Street, they have well in excess of that 846 cubic yards a linear foot. So that was the number that we're using to objectively look at, you know, all of the profiles along the whole shoreline. Those profiles that are north of that Third Street point all have more volume than what our goal is to maintain that 846 number.
Well, that answer is a good lead-in to the next question. With the sand in that whole profile area, let's focus on the sand that's on the beach, outside the water.
Yep.
Is there any benefit to doing sand fencing during part of the year to try and build the dune, the dune itself?
Certainly. Anytime, anytime that there is dry sand out there blowing around, putting sand fencing out there is a good idea. You know, putting it as far back on the dune as you possibly can. You don't necessarily want to, you know, put it low on the beach or put it out from the beach and try to expand the dune because as that, as it builds up, whenever you get a high-water event, it's going to get up into that area and start chewing it out. So think about it as stockpiling that sand as far back on the dune as you possibly can.
So the dunes grow from the top down?
Correct. So, well, from the bottom up. But, you know, you, when you see that scarping, you know, to have a contractor go out there and put that sand fencing in place, you know, there's a little bit of guesswork involved in where to put it. But in general, we would always recommend trying to put it as far back on that dune as possible to try to keep that sand, once it's captured, to try to keep it up in that area.
Okay. And then I have one final question, and I asked you this previously, and I think we may have been talking past each other here. But it relates to beach pushes. Now, if one lot does a beach push, that's different. That, I mean, that's separate from, if you have like a half dozen, I'm making this number up.
Right.
If you have a half dozen people doing a beach push, does that affect the beach profile or the dynamics behind all this science here? I mean, because it's, you know, again, I'm not the well-educated person on this subject, but it seems to me that you're lowering the beach profile, taking away sand that could be blown to the sand, but I just interjected my thoughts. The question is, does a string of beach pushes have any impact on the overall goal here?
Sure. I mean, I think, I think even if at a half dozen or a dozen, you're still talking about a fairly small part of the beach and it probably wouldn't, I mean, I may have said this before, but in terms of beach pushes, where we see some utility of a beach push is after a storm where you really have no dune left to try to build something up to provide you a little bit of a buffer to get you through the rest of the winter season or, you know, hurricane season, whatever season you're preparing for, to try to keep water from coming up during high water and coming onto your property. But in those areas north of Third Street, you know, there, you know, at Seventh Street, there's clearly some scarping going on in that dune there, but when you walk up onto the beach walk and you walk across that beach walk, you're walking across the distance that's probably the width of this room of, you know, really nice vegetated dune. That's a huge amount of sand that you have between your property and the beach. And that's all being played, that's all being factored in when we talk about that 846 cubic yards a linear foot. All that sand is built into that number there. And so, you know, a beach push in that area, it's not something that's going to last long. So if you push that sand up and then you put some sand fencing on it, you've lowered the beach out there so the next high-water event, that water can get up into that sand you just pushed faster than it would have otherwise if you had a, you know, if you had a nice steep profile like this as opposed to a profile like that. It's just temporary is, you know, the main point.
I understand that and even Ken kind of recommends against beach pushes, but they've allowed it because it's something that a property owner can do.
Right. It's an action they can take.
So.
And like I said, I mean, in the short order, you know, after Hurricane Florence, if, you know, you're vulnerable, you want to get through the winter season, sure, it makes sense to go out there and try to stockpile some of that sand in front of your property where you no longer have a dune. But if you already have a pretty robust dune there and you're just trying to get the sand that you feel scarped out and has washed onto the beach back up in that area, you know, most likely over the course of, you know, a couple more high-water events, that's just going to, it's just going to reoccur.
Okay. Thanks. And these questions weren't intended to be hostile.
No, no, not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
This, I mean, this exercise of, you know, answering questions and, you know, us trying to, trying to provide as much information is part of the process. You know, we've been there with, you know, Duck and Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk answering very similar questions. So I don't take any of it personally or hostile or anything like, just trying to give you guys information.
Going back just a bit to that, to the Pelican Watch project, there was no sand there to push. That was a situation where the sand, you could have pushed with, if you had something there to rebuild the dune or increase the worth of the dune wasn't available.
Correct.
So there we put, we added sand strictly from, up to the dune.
Correct.
And a good bit of sand and that gave something, that gave protection to the dune line that was remaining and so far that's held up.
Correct. And the dune with the sand fencing has kind of built itself. We didn't, you know, we didn't physically place any sand in that dune, but.
Right.
The sand fencing certainly has beefed it up.
Any other questions, Council?
The number you gave is per thousand square feet. Is that based on which option?
Per thousand linear feet.
It was based on, it was based on option three or two.
Yeah.
And, I mean, you know, as soon as I say it, I think of all the caveats that go into that number. I mean, there, you know, the mobilization doesn't really translate linearly like that. So, I mean, that's probably, that's probably a, on the high side, it's probably a safe number to use. I would think that that number, if we were just adding a thousand-foot a beach, it might be a little less than that, but again, I'd rather pull the spreadsheet out and kind of think it through, but.
Right.
Again, we're, you know, we were just trying to, we tried to come up with a very objective way of looking at the entire shoreline and using those numbers, that 846 and 858 cubic yards within that wedge makes a lot of sense based on the, you know, the storm vulnerability analysis and being able to go through it and look at, you know, different profiles. And it allows us, you know, really simple, easy updates if we do this survey in 2019, getting to that computation of our, okay, well, how much volume do we have on these profiles now? Has it dipped below that 846? Are there other profiles that should be included in there that were not included previously?
Again, a couple of questions. The 2019 survey, I need to ask you if you could get a little bit more detail on that. Do we need to, would that occur in June of 2019? Because I heard the word July there for a second.
It would, it would occur in June 2019 prior to the first of July.
So can you, off the top of your head, give us an estimate on what that would entail?
Based on the surveys that we did, have done before, I think it's in the range of 13,000 to 15,000.
Okay. Second question is, as you know and as the Council knows, Southern Shore, the Town of Southern Shores is the only local government, city or county, on the coast of North Carolina that does not have authority to conduct expedient eminent domain proceedings for beach nourishment to gain the necessary construction easements.
Right.
What would the effect on a project be if only the wet sand portion of a property were nourished and not the dry sand because of the fact that the owner refused to grant the construction easement?
Sure. Well, let's look at this picture real quick. If you look to the northern part of this picture where the, where the pipe is ending and, you know, you've got to kind of have a flat line of where they're building that beach fill, think in terms of where that high-water line is north of where that, you know, where they're actually placing sand. So basically, the contractors, if an easement was not granted by the property owner, the contractor could not place sand, could not access the beach landward of where that mean high-water mark is. So look at the waves breaking on the beach north of where they're placing sand in that picture, you know, go up a couple of feet from there to where that wet-dry line is. That's basically about where the high-water mark is. So the contractors would not be able to access that part of the beach, but they could continue, they could put that fill out in the water the way that that fill is progressing north. They can, they can place fill beyond that mean-high-water line and keep going up, but in reality, it would basically create a pond in front of your property if you didn't go on with it. Now, over the course of a couple of high-tide events where the water overflows, the six-foot berm, all of that would fill in from, you know, water and from wind-blown sand. But in general, I mean, in theory, you're robbing people around you that, you know, put the full volume of sand in their area and, you know, their sand is blowing into your hole to fill it in so that there's, you know, eventually there's a smooth beach there. I know in the Naggs Head project, the original Naggs Head project, that occurred a couple of places. I know it's occurred down in Oak Island in Brunswick County, down in the southern part of the state, certainly not preferable. One of the really encouraging things to me was that the Town of Duck, I don't believe they condemned a single property for access during their project. They were able to go through, they got, you know, 95% of them, and then there were some, you know, discussions and additional meetings and additional graphics that were provided for those few holdouts. But eventually, they, you know, they came to agreement and provided the easement that was necessary. So, you know, that's encouraging. But that, in reality, if that, if that scenario played out, that's how it would work out.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the town manager a question. When you talk about quick take and eminent domain, are you talking about taking people's property away from them or are you talking about obtaining an easement for placement of sand?
We're talking about the latter, condemning an easement right in the dry sand portion of their property.
Thank you.
Which, to continue with that, is, as you know, subject to the public trust anyway. So it is their lot, the public, the dry sand, and the public trust has the rights to walk north of, south of that property anyway. So that's what we're talking about.
Let me ask you this. During the Pelican Watch project, we didn't have any problems getting easements by the time we were ready to start the project. Is that correct?
That's correct. We were able to negotiate all those. And of course, the preference is for those easements to be perpetual. So you can, when you come back for the maintenance in five years, we don't have to go through the whole thing over again.
Any other questions, Council?
Thank you, Ken.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant.
Sure. Happy to do it.
Council, at this point, Doug and Andrew Carter are here from DEC Associates from Charlotte, and they're going to make a presentation to you on what type of financial services they can provide in town planning for such an event as beach nourishment. And as I said, they have assisted with the other municipalities in the county as well as their county, and they're working with them right now as we speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager. Now, which button do I hit here? Hey, right there. I'm not really good with technology. I'm still working on it. You'll manage it for me. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Madam Clerk, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We're going to probably, are we behind or on time? We can probably catch you up a little bit. Okay, Andrew, would you go to the next slide, please? Let us talk to you a little bit about what we're going to talk to you about. We're going to give you a general introduction. We're going to talk about shoreline protection, financial planning, what is it, what does it have in it? We're going to talk about financing modes that are available to do this, assuming you won't have it all in cash. We'll talk about services that we provide and then, of course, at the end, we'll have all the question time that you would like to take. Under general introduction, let me just first introduce ourselves a little bit in our background. Maybe when Andrew comes up for his part, he can give you his background. Let me first give you mine. I'm a native North Carolinian. I was born and raised in Iredale County. I now live in the great state of Charlotte Mecklenburg, and I love it. That is a joke, y'all are supposed to laugh.
They don't know about Queens, so.
In the early part of my career, I went to work for a gentleman called Harlan E. Boils, who used to be the State Treasurer of North Carolina and essentially was the father of my career because I worked at the local. father of my career because I worked at the local government commission a number of years. And then after that, went to work for the City of Charlotte and became the CFO of the city in my early thirties. And at thirty-nine years old, decided I can either stay in government fifteen more years or I can do something else. And my wife convinced me to do something else, and I became an investment banker and moved to the side of the business in advising governments on financings. And then about fifteen years ago, I formed DEC Associates, which is an independent financial advisory firm, and we'll talk to you a little bit about that in a minute, with a goal to assist only on the advisory side, not on the capital raising side. So we sit on your side of the table as you look at the methods to raise capital. Um, and when, we've been doing that ever since. Um, obviously, Southern Shores recognizes the need for financial planning, especially as you see your beach as your primary economic driver. You're also surrounded by a group of towns who've seen also the benefits of this and have done this to, at this point, what seems to be very much their benefit. I can tell you a little bit of background about how we got started in Dare County. Many of you, of you know Dave Clausen, who's the CFO and Assistant County Manager of the County of Dare. When I was City Finance Director or the CEO, the Chief Financial Officer, he was the manager on my audit. And so I've known Dave for a long time, and so all of a sudden, someday, I get a call from Dave saying, "We gotta figure out our finances in the county and we're working with towns." And so that's basically how small our world is. Um, uh, obviously, you're looking at nourishment at, at your shoreline and are beginning to see cost and are beginning to talk about alternatives for fu- for funding. Uh, the current focus that we would have for you is to find the most cost-effective way to do that. How do you meet the financing need and how you, do you do that at lowest cost? As you probably know, current statutes provide, state statutes provide fairly limited means to do this. Um, and here again, to give you a background story, when Nag's Head was working on it, I got a call from the county saying, "We're partnering with Nag's Head and we have to figure out how to do this big old project because it was a considerable amount of money." And we were brought in to work with the town as well as with the county, and out of that was born in North Carolina, the first time use of special obligation bonds to fund the cost of, of beach nourishment. And those bonds are used, you'll hear more about them a little bit later, those bonds are used by you, the city, the county, if it becomes your partner and would co-share with you, they finance their partnership by a different method, but everybody brings to the table their share of the cost in these financing scenarios. So we're here today to discuss the role of financial planning as we move forward and how you might get to your financial share of, of the cost if you vote to move forward. Okay? First of all, let me just define for you, what are we? What is a financial advisor? Where did financial advisors come from? For the longest time, and especially when I worked for the North Carolina Local Government Commission, the perception was, is that the local government commission was the financial advisor. And at that time, there was a group of people, I worked in that group of people, that would go out to towns, counties, uh, and cities and work with them on a number of things, but the staff was never large enough, things became way too complicated, and so all of a sudden, the use of independent financial advisors became a larger and larger method by which governments got advice on how they did things. And I'll give you an example of what that can include, if, if it might be useful to you. Um, you'll see on hi- here, well, before I get to the who is DEC, independent financial advisors help you in finding the financial capital and raising it, but we don't raise it for you. That would mean we would sit on two sides of the table. It's like me telling you to buy a car and then financing it for you. So all we do is work with you on finding the right car, and then the, the financer is somebody else. We don't sit on both sides of the table, we only sit on one. We're also registered with the SEC and the MSRB. That was all brought about after two thousand and eight, in the infamous Dodd-Frank bill. So now all financial advisors, whether you're, they're your independent financial advisor helping you on retirement, or whether they're financial advisors like us who work with governmental entities, we're all regulated. Um, as a firm, we've been ranked as the number one firm in North Carolina since our inception, fifteen years ago, on a continuum of the number of deals that we've done. We basically do our business almost exclusively in North Carolina. Uh, I was born and raised here, as were both of my sons, who are my business partners, and so it seems, and, and there's a tremendous amount of growth in need in North Carolina, and so we basically cut our pattern in the state we know, and so that we can intimately understand the laws, the practices, um, uh, best business practices and that kind of thing. Um, we, uh, give you advice on the kind of debt, how you should mix your paygo. Um, we provide you advice relating to the plans and the execution, and then we would help you to, to develop financial policies on how you keep this going. How do you start, and then how do you get five years later to your next, to your first, uh, essential, essentially, maintenance effort? To give you, to give you some comparison of what we do, we do Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro, and then we do all the be, uh, many beach towns, not just in Dare County, and kind of everything in between. And so it's a very varied practice in one that's pretty interesting. Um, okay, Andrew. Um, let me talk to you a little bit about the importance of financial planning and why is the engineer, and I, I think it's so interesting, the engineering guy who needs a financial plan. I hope you've got one for your time.
Yeah.
Um, so basically, what is the importance of this financial plan that you need to develop along the way? First, it provides you a roadmap. How do you get there? And to be honest with you, when we got our first call from Nag's Head, they had no idea how they were gonna get there. They just knew that the cost was many, many millions, that there was gonna be a sharing between the city, uh, the town and the, and the county, but they didn't know how they were gonna get their share. So it provides a roadmap for how you get there. It sets policies for how you would get to your financial plan and achievement objectives, and we would help you with those achievement objectives. It helps you measure achievement. Uh, it gives you an annual review process, uh, so that you can change your financial plan as the, as, as needed. Uh, it gives you a greater ability to have more financial alternatives if you do a plan. Without a plan, it's kinda hard to define what you can get because you don't have the plan that sets the basis for getting there. And then it provides a tool to match needs with priorities. Um, for you guys, it can also help, um, set financial metrics for town-wide financial policies. I mean, folks, I sat in here today and saw six million bucks on the town hall, and now there's, I think I saw a pretty big number on beach needs, and so it seems to me, setting a financial plan, setting objectives, setting your metrics, defining how you're gonna meet them would be a pretty important thing. We would also work with you, if you like, on investment policies, what are your debt policies? And then an appropriate accounting mode for beach cost, and we're gonna talk about that more just a little bit. Um, um, a- as you know, when you do shoreline protection, it up, it creates this upfront capital investment, but it also creates operating costs throughout the time period. Um, the borrowing of the initial beach nourishment cost is customary and it's pretty complex sometimes. In fact, when we did the three towns together recently in, uh, all of that was coordinated all at one time. We closed at one time, we found the same financier at the lowest cost. It was pretty complicated, actually, to get all of that done together. Probably, it, it is easier, you do Nag's Head alone, you do a Southern Shore alone, it probably makes it a little bit, uh, easier. Uh, there are obviously potentials for partnership with the county. Y'all have talked about that earlier. As, as a point of disclosure, we're, and I've said this earlier, but want you to know, we're an ongoing advisor to the County of Dare. At this point, we found no, um, conflicts between the towns in Dare in trying to get this done. They have a very sophisticated financial model and planning process to look at the money that they have coming in and what will be going out, and, um, it, that sort of helps us as, as we look at what are the, what are the available dollars to help others along the beach. Um, um, and then, and then we also know that long-term beach management is a continuing cost and it pro- and it proceeds into the future. So you won't do your beach nourishment project and then it's over with. You'll have to maintain revenues throughout that time period to help you accumulate money so that when you do your next maintenance project, you will have some fund balance available to you, you'll have some planning cost, and then you'll look at what would it cost us to essentially finance the maintenance. We just finished that in Nag's Head. It worked pretty well. The town had accumulated a goodly amount of capital, and so we didn't have to borrow with all of it. And so there's, um, if you have a plan that goes beyond the initial project and into the future years, it will help you at that five-year timeline. As y'all well know, Nag's Head is a nonprofit foundation, which really helps all along, not only in the county's ability to help people because it lasted a little longer than everybody thought, but it also gave time for the town to accumulate more resources as well. So one of the things we would recommend to you is, I don't think you have, now you might, is that you establish your own beach fund and that you accumulate and manage and have revenues and expenditures that are unique to the beach, not only its initial capital cost, but its operating cost as well. We found that in the other beach towns we've worked with, both in Dare County and outside of Dare County, that that is the best way to keep this out of the general fund so that you don't mix cost, so that you don't have a year where maybe beach costs aren't quite as high as you thought they were, and somehow that blends itself over into the general fund. This gives you better accounting and I think a way to hold your costs down, frankly, on the beach side. Okay, Andrew, what is next? This is Andrew. He's going to talk to you a bit about the methods that you can borrow, what kinda services we provide. But, but let me say one final thing to you that I didn't say in the beginning. Because we are a regulated entity and because you have not yet retained us or some other advisor to do this for you, we can give you histories and provide information on how this would work, but we cannot give you what we think is your plan because we would not be under contract to you. So what our presentation to you about more today is process, how you get there, what you need to think about, what are the methods you can get this done, and then what would follow later is the specific development of a plan. So we'll just talk to you a little bit now about methods that are available to borrow the money.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. Uh, as Doug mentioned before, my name is Andrew Carter. I've been with DEC Associates for the past fifteen years since we started. I am his son, so, uh, there are a lot of Carters in the DEC Associates. People call us sometimes just the Carter firm. So, uh, I have seen Ken give a number of these presentations. I'm pretty close to being able to understand all of the science behind it, uh, but, uh, we really enjoy these projects. We've done a number of them, and, uh, we believe that the path forward has been, uh, plowed pretty, pretty well, and so not being the first to go through this process, you have a lot of history and experience from others that we can apply to your case as well, especially here in Dare County, which does have a pretty unique system with the county's support from the occupancy tax that they collect. So, uh, to, to get back into your particular financing, um, as Doug said, what financing modes are available? He said earlier that we, under state statute, there are not a whole lot of tools that you have to be able to pay for a project. And of course, the first is paygo, which is just cash out of, uh, out of the fund balance. I believe in the project you did in, uh, the Pelican Point project, y'all spent some cash out of fund balance and then also did a special assessment for a certain portion of it, and that was how you funded the, I believe, the five hundred thousand of your project, of which the county came up with the other half. So that was all done through paygo funds. Uh, we believe that, uh, most any financing and financial plan is, is important to have a mix of not only paygo but also borrowed funds in order to leverage the dollars that you have for a long-term commitment. Uh, as Doug said, and there's a, there's an adage that I use all the time, once you're in the business of beach nourishment, you're in the business of beach nourishment. Similar to if you build a building, uh, you have to continue to maintain that building. You have to replace its roofs and maintain the, uh, the foundation and all the other things. So once we get into this, this business, we try to create perpetual, uh, machine in creating the beach fund, which has dedicated revenues and expenditures so that you can continue the process for many years down the road, uh, and not just look at the project as a standalone, but as a multi-yeared phase project as we look at the next maintenance events, uh, which is what the county does. The county's model looks at not only the projects they have to look at now, but then also the next maintenance and possibly the next maintenance event after that. So the county is taking a very long-term view, and that's how they determine what kinda capacities they have in order to fund the projects and, uh, be able to fit them in the dollars that they have, uh, to leverage as well. So besides, um, cash, you have also the borrowed portions, um, that you can use to finance the project. The first, under state statute, general obligation bonds, that's probably the most, um, more well-known, uh, financing vehicle. It requires a vote of the citizens, um, so it has to be done on a major election. The authorization gives you seven years to spend or, uh, issue those funds for the project. Um, there's a public hearing process, of course, and the, the security that a general obligation is. So think about your mortgage, your security is the house, your, your actual physical property. Securing a GO bond is your technical unlimited, uh, taxing power of the board to increase taxes. Um, in North Carolina, there is a limit, I believe it's a dollar fifty, on your tax rate for operations, but the LGC can compel you, uh, tax rate higher than that to pay any, um, debt service that you might have out there. So GO, basically, what you are pledging is that you will raise taxes that will raise them severely enough to make those debt service payments. So that's what you're pledging under a GO. In an installment financing, or a general statute one sixty-eight twenty, this is more akin to what I would say, a, a, a regular mortgage. Um, it's, uh, it's backed by a piece of real property, which could be buildings, uh, actual real estate, but tangible actual assets. Um, it does not require a voter referendum, but then obviously requires public hearings, so the public has input, uh, before, uh, you'd be able to enter into the contracts. And, um, it could have some additional, uh, costs, including property appraisals, this, that, and the other, as you're trying to create a collateral package that a financing firm might wanna take on. Our, um, our third and more uncommon method is special assessment bonds. This would be a financing that would be based on top of the assessments that you would collect. So in your case, you did more of a cash assessment. You're gonna be taking those funds in and basically replenishing your, your current funds that you used before. This would be a borrowing based on those funds that you would be getting from the assessments. Um, not gonna spend a whole lot of time on, on that one in particular. Uh, it, it's a very complicated process, requires, uh, basically, the property owners to initiate the process, it requires sixty, sixty percent of them to, uh, to approve it. So it has not been the, the probably most advantageous piece of borrowing method that we have. So lastly, we, we land on special obligation bonds, or Sobs. General statute one fifty-nine I thirty. We have found that this has, has been the more preferred method, uh, mostly because of the nature of what, uh, beach nourishment financing is. It's sand, and sand is hard to capitalize. Uh, it's hard to find people that'll take, they can't come and pick up the sand and take it away like they could take your home for, for, uh, for example. So a special obligation bond, what it does is it creates a collateral pool for security based on taxes and other fees that you do not directly levy. So you get a number of taxes and fees that's levied by the county and then come down to you all. Sales tax is, is one that comes up to mind, uh, first. And then there's other, uh, fees that you could possibly fill in there that is, uh, under state statute, cable franchise, other types of franchise fees and taxes that you can use to create a collateral pool. That would be what, uh, you create to be able to do the financing, and that's the security that if you don't pay your bills, they would come after you. You do not have to set those aside. You can continue to budget those in your budget, continue to spend those if you always would, but that's the, that's the hook to get- would, but that's the, that's the hook to get you to continue to pay your bills, just like in a mortgage, they'll take your house if you don't pay your bills. You can pay the special obligation bond from any legal source, so it could be from any funds that you have. So the repayment source of paying the actual bonds would probably be completely different than the collateral that we would put up under a special obligation bond. And that's, it's somewhat complicated to think about, but we could get much more in detail with it once we go farther down the road. Special obligation bonds require, under state statute, a municipal service district, an MSD to be formed in the area of which the people will have a benefit of the project. It does not require that MSD be taxed. It simply requires that MSD be set up under state statute in order to issue a special obligation bond in that area. So you can or cannot levy a tax inside the MSD, it is not prescribed. And then special obligation bonds, as we've seen in the past, has been in consultation with the county, so they might bring a particular portion of money to the table, we would subtract that out of the total budget and that's what falls into what the town may have to come up with to finance a project. And as the manager was saying, I believe the county is still working through getting some updates on some of the erosion rates and the project sizes that they're starting to look at and running that through their model to see what kind of capacities there are and to see if anyone comes up with any additional projects that they have not heard of to best leverage the money they have inside the occupancy tax. So I've talked about many of these. For SOBs, selected revenues are identified as a source of your credit pledge. We would find those within your CAFR. That would create the collateral pool that we would need. And then the revenues for debt repayment would come from any sources you might find. And I don't want to prescribe any per se, but that could be savings in the budget, it could be additional property taxes, it could be MSD taxes, it could be other fees or revenues that you might have for the actual debt repayment. So there, you really get to decide the mix of how is the debt repaid based on what is most palatable to this jurisdiction. And you'll see all the other beach towns have done something a little bit different. You'll see the way they've set up their MSDs or their mix of how they got to what they needed to pay their debt service every year. So each place is different and we would help analyze in conjunction with your staff, what is, what is happening here and how to best fit the mix of revenues that you might need for any sort of debt repayment or the cash that we might put onto the project. So services we provide. I would say we, we do what I call a soup to nuts from beginning to the end of the process. As, as Ken said, absolutely agree, the sooner you can get started on this process, the better. I believe the three, the three beach towns was a little over three years when we first started talking with each one of them. There is some, there are some timing issues. For special obligation bonds, it requires you to set up an MSD that has its own timing and legal structures that you have to incorporate into an entire financial planning calendar. So that might need to be done a full year before you even do the contract. So we'll have to, we back everything up from, if we're going to have a project in 2021 or 2022, we start backing everything up from there and saying, when do we need to have X in place, when do we need to have Y in place? And so that helps create, it's going to take a couple of years for us to really get there and to give you all the time to absorb the information and be able to make good decisions moving forward. So we would advise on the structure, the timing and raising of funds to create the revenue streams in order to correct, to fund the project. And working with a number of lenders in the state, this is a specialized type of project. It's, it's not done everywhere. So we will work with the lenders to know what they're looking for in the financing package and can deliver to them so that you get great rates when they, we go out to bid for a financing. Creation of a funding model, projecting revenues and expenditures needed to fund the project and its continual maintenance. We start this from day one. We believe the modeling and the planning, the projections is what really allows you to plan for what's coming up and then being able to look not only at this maintenance event, but the next one. And as you continue generating funds between events, how can that help you in your next project to reduce the amount you might need to borrow? As Doug said, Nags Head was able to put five or six million dollars on their project that they didn't need to borrow because they accumulated some in their beach fund and was able to use that at the time when they did their. We would help you with the creation of the calendars, not only financing calendars, but the calendars we need to get through the political bodies and the LGC. We revise on the structure and the credit package needed to attract the banks. So again, we will be putting together and telling you what is needed as far as levels of revenues or collateral to get good bids and good interest rates if we do a financing. Of course, complete LGC support, that includes everything from the application process to getting their approval. We work with helping you with the documents. Once we find a financing partner, we can help you find or advise on finding a bond attorney, which you will need to hire in order to do the documents and such, the legals that you will need to get through this process in conjunction with the town attorney. And we will work in concert with the county and other towns to try to get the lowest cost in project through timing and coupling. As Ken mentioned, there were millions, I think it was millions saved in the mobilization of the three projects. And although it made the project a little more complicated because they did bid that as one big project from multiple different financing sources, we found that it ended up working out in the end and it ended up saving the towns a, a, a large amount of money in the mobilization costs, which can be some of the bigger costs because they got to get the machines down here. So in saying with that, I believe we're in our, our final observations.
Sure. And we'll just do that here. Here are the final observations. Ultimately, you as the policy folks in the town will need to determine which funding method works best and how you accomplish the financial plan so that you can meet your nourishment goals. You will be a big part of this decision-making process. We think long-term planning is essential, not only for the initial, but as we said, for the future maintenance of the beach, not only the big five-year maintenance projects, but the maintenance that go on for you throughout the year. We, we will need to have the cost and timing so that we can accurately identify the financial plan. And then finally, I guess, I was taught this a long time ago by my dad, and that is, you never go in without asking for the order. And so, I mean, I think we would just be very pleased to work with you to do this and can talk with you in more detail at a later time about how that works, how will we, we contract to do that if we talk with your manager about any good deals. So, I mean, basically that's the initial thought process on how you get to a financial plan for the beach nourishment cost. And we're here to answer whatever questions you have.
Any questions, council?
Sorry, do you work with any other towns out here?
Do we work with any other towns here?
All.
Okay. We work with all.
Okay, I was reading some, yeah, some of your.
Starting with Nags Head and then we moved on to the other town.
Okay.
We helped the county with their unincorporated areas in Rodan.
Yes, we did. We did some of the unincorporated as well. We do a number of other beach, beach nourishment sort of became, once Dave called me, Dave Clausen called me and said, you got to help us figure out how to nurture Nags Head, it sort of became a specialty part of that, our business. So we do nourishment not only in the northern part of North Carolina, but we go all the way down to the southern part as well and have done some very interesting mix of funds. Imagine a scenario where you're looking at a townwide tax, three different MSDs, all with different tax rates, plus a big, plus an assessment. So we've looked at some very complicated funding scenarios from the south all the way to the north. I will say this in conclusion, I think having as a firm looked at almost every kind of financing that you can envision would go on, whether it be beaches or building mass transit for Charlotte, or now building mass transit for Durham. I think the partnership that the towns and the county have had here is one of the best that I've seen because it's like everybody's on board and understanding how important it is to maintain your economic engine and how important it is to maintain services. So I think, I think Dare County is probably a study in how you do, Dare County and its cooperation with towns is probably a study in how you do it right.
Doug, can you, for budget planning, can you get into just a second what we talked about as far as the cost of the contract, et cetera?
Sure. How, how we would customarily do this is there's a financing, a financial planning portion of this. And that would be developing the financial plan, setting up the beach fund, defining the revenues that would go in it, looking at the financing sources we would use likely SOBs, special obligation bonds, looking at the mechanism of how you'll raise your revenues through townwide taxes or MSD taxes or a combination or other fees or revenues you may have. So that financial planning, plus setting up policies, doing your policies and all of that, that initial planning part would take us up to the point where the project would be ready to go. And then the second part is, is how we would assist you in finding the lowest cost of money through your banking partners. So that would essentially be assisting in the financing portion of the project, not the planning. Customarily, the planning part of the project, are you looking for numbers?
Yes, please.
Thirty-five to forty thousand, that's typical, that's the cost range that we've had for the other towns. And then fi- and then working on the financing, finding the banking partner, thirty thousand. So that's been the ranges of cost. All of which are reimbursable when you do a financing. So anything that you do upfront, you can reimburse when you do the financing. These financings, so you will know, have generally been over a five-year period because we've learned, unlike Nags Head, it lasts a day, I guess we could have financed a little longer, but the, the view was, this is going to last five years, so they're typically five-year financings. But we're continuing to look at, as we get more and better data, I think to see where the towns, the remainder of the towns come down on their time before initial project and the maintenance project. But typically, they would be five-year financings.
One, one last question for me. We talked about your firm's role in actually rolling up sleeves and getting into the maps of figuring out an MSD.
Correct.
Can you describe to the council some of the things you think about and go through when we, when we actually do that? So I think that's important for them to know.
Sort of like what we did, Doug, and for others. I mean, you can look at layers of districts. You can determine that oceanfront MSD is one thing and perhaps there's a second or third tier. There may even be a commercial tier. So you look at tiering as best you can to fairly, as best, and not everybody has the same definition of fairly, but you look at the fairest basis that you can find to allocate the cost based upon property where it is, those sorts of things. So we look at that process together with y'all because obviously we have to have your input from the community's needs and perceptions and, and, and all of this is an education process. We were in so many meetings and, Doug, I mean, I remember the first one we went in, you know, that's a big old room like this, it was bigger actually, as I remember. And after the first meeting we went in up there, I thought, are we going to go out of here on a rail or what will happen by the time the meeting is over? And we didn't. So it, it's that kind of thing. It's looking at the fairest way you can to, and then also there's a question of should there be a portion of this that's townwide so that everybody's included in the cost? So we help take you through a process of analyzing that, coming not only through the staff to get the staff to the level they're comfortable and then come and follow to the elected officials, to the policymakers to say, does this make it for you or do we need to go back to the drawing board? Does that explain the way you want to get to be? I'm very verbal and very hand-waving too, so if that's driving y'all nuts, I'll try to be better the next time. My father told me my second career should be a Baptist preacher, so.
That was not an issue.
Good, good.
I appreciated your, your presentation very much. It was well done and we, I think we all learned from it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it a lot.
Glad to be here.
Pretty frightening, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Lot happening, lot.
Now, that, that is the items on the agenda that I, that we had placed, Mr. Mayor. Thank you back on the agenda.
Thank you. This time, we have time for people who want to take it for council comments. Anyone have any, that want to add to this or say, reference this, that, this discussion this morning?
Yeah, I've got one. I was happy to see that all three presenters reinforced the idea that there's a, I think a real desperate need in southern shores for a long-term planning. I think we've been talking about this for the last three and a half years. We've got some significant financial challenges ahead of us if we consider the, what was presented to us and there is no doubt that we got to do a much better job of long-term planning because it seems like everything we've done to now has been just in time financing and planning and it's just going to have to, have to be better organized in the future. And I think we're coming up on budget planning here in April. We're going to have to start considering some of these projects and we're going to have, and most importantly, we've got to figure out how we're going to pay for them. I think, I don't think we have unlimited funds to do all these projects and so long-term planning is critical to where we go forward. That's all I have. The presentations, by the way, were excellent. Really appreciate the time you spent bringing information. It's very educational for me, I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Anything, Gary, you want to add?
No, I'm going to pass today. Thank you.
I agree with Fred about the long-range planning. I think that's council's function. We need to be sitting down as, as small committee groups or individual sessions like this where we can talk about what our needs are and how we want to prioritize them, what's important, what's not important. I'm willing to work with anybody here on that, on that job, on that mission, and it has to involve staff of course, in many ways, but we need to, we need to establish some guidelines and establish some, some scheduling that they can happen.
Right. Well, you're right. I mean, what we looked at today, what, something between seventeen and twenty-four million dollars price tags heading on low.
Fifteen, twenty-five, yeah.
Low end to the, to the top end. You know, we got the fire, the fire department's online, I mean, that's, that's out there.
We budgeted that.
We budgeted that, so that's, that's an expense that we're going to have to do and beach nourishment's something we can't just ignore. So we need to develop a plan to do that. There's a lot of other things that are coming. The facilities report was excellent. Appreciated what those ladies said and looking at it. I mean, if you just look at the deficiencies, there's a large amount of money that needs to be spent just to bring up to standard on each one of these buildings.
They're going to get into a total rebuild, yes.
Well, other than the total rebuild, just the upgrade to standard, so.
I would like to thank town manager for arranging these speakers and getting them in. I think this is a planning meeting. I agree that we could do a little more formalization of that, but as the mayor said, we got to be able to work together on this stuff.
And so I guess we find, figure out how we, where we start. We're going to start sitting down and talking about it, certainly, but it's in a public venue or with this individual committee type thing that comes back to us with their recommendations. That's what I'd like to hear from you, from you, the council. That's what I'd like to hear from you, from you, the council members about that, is how you wanna do that, as far as how we wanna set up a sort of a plan where we're gonna discuss budgeting and financing, long-range planning. And I, I would suggest some kind of a staff council committee to start with that, and we can, we can talk to staff about it in more detail, but I will, I will try to get the ball rolling with that as soon as I can and work with staff and see what their thoughts are. Ask one of, one of you at least to work with me on that, or if two of you wanna take it on your own, you can certainly do that. I don't have to, I don't have to be the, be the, be the pony.
I'd agree with you, but, you know, we could do more of these where we have staff and we have council, where you've got full council input as well as full staff input, planning sessions to discuss and just air it out and know what's going on.
I'd also like to hear from the public when we're doing these planning sessions, getting their input. There are a lot of good ideas out there, and there are a lot of qualified people to provide us that input. And I agree with Gary, I think it should be open council meetings and, and get their input as well.
I think open public meetings is probably the best way to go. That's the best opportunity to get public involvement, but I think we as a council have to figure out how to get the public in here.
I think that's gonna be pretty easy when you start talking about MSDs and what it's gonna actually cost. That, I think that'll be easy.
Yeah, you say, you say the word taxes in this town, it gets a lot of attention, so.
Well, when you're talking about that, then you're talking about taxes, and you're talking about changing districts. Yeah, folks are gonna...
Um, Mr. Mayor, the first item that you heard today that needs to be done in this current fiscal year was mentioned by Ken, survey in June, fifteen thousand dollars, and I'll recommend to you that that go on the April agenda as the council to consider as a budget amendment for this year, and you'll be able to decide then if you want to continue on with the beach nourishment process for sure, because that would lock in for that particular piece of work, and that would be in June.
Don't have a March 5th?
We do, and the agenda's already gone out for that. But I mean, if there's no consent, if there's consensus, we can just put it on the April agenda.
Tom, I get to start in June.
April, is that?
April, can, if you approve it in April, I mean, we'll sign the deal with Ken to go ahead and do that in June when he does with town of Duck.
Two months, wait. Give us money.
They have the schedule.
I'm sure he's already got us on the books. Thank you, Peter.
Uh, and then, of course, in your budget planning sessions, we can bring up to you the cost of DEC for their two components of a contract, and also the cost of Ken's firm for FYI nineteen-twenty. You saw his calendar there, whatever the cost would be for that particular year. So those are items that you could go ahead and commit to now for, for as beach nourishment. Once we get Doug Carter rolling under a contract, I think all the things you're discussing will fall into place. Also, the big caveat is win, and we will not be able to work that out until the county comes up with what its actual prognosis for the fund is, and we'll know some more about that tomorrow and the next, in the following days, and I can report back to the council on that in the next meeting.
Just to re-emphasize what Peter's been saying about the county and not, not knowing exactly where they stand financially, excuse me, and how much help they can be to us, they've committed their, their dollars to replenishment, re-nourishment projects for this next cycle. And unfortunately, we didn't have a major project where we could, say, raise our hand for half a million, or for five million dollars, or three million dollars. So we're gonna see what, tomorrow, we'll know better what they're, what they'll be able to provide or will not provide to us as far as, which will help us in our planning as far as what we, the steps we have to take to, to get those dollars should we proceed with a, with a nurturing project. Anything else, council? Thank you. Paul Borzalino is, would like to speak during public, public comment.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Paul. A little soft spot in the floor.
I almost took my ankle out. Thank you, council, mayor, and manager. My name is Paul Borzalino. I live at sixteen Seventh Ave, Southern Shores. I'm the guy that puts up all the Christmas lights. If any of you come by to see them. If you didn't, come by next year. I first wanna say thank you to all of you for paying attention to these issues. I came here today to talk about the beach replenishment issue, but it's been great to hear about the, the fire department, and to hear about financial planning, and to hear about the building improvements that need to be done. And my mind is just blown with the costs that we're talking about on all of this, but necessary costs. And so I also say thank you for bringing in financial experts to try to figure this out because it's, to me, a little mind-boggling. Related to the beach project, since that's what I came here mostly to talk about, I know you've gotten several emails from my neighbors, so you're familiar with the issues. I live at, in, on the, on Seventh Ave, and so I'm mostly speaking about that. I've read the entire report, believe it or not, I did. Thank you, very thorough. I'm impressed.
Somebody read it?
I'm not an engineering guy. I wish I had been, but very impressive. But I'm here to disagree a little bit with the recommendations because I live on Seventh Ave, and I see the beach. My concern is that the report does not recommend any beach replenishment for Southern Shores from Fifth Ave to the north end. If you look at your page twenty-four, I know this was up on the chart up on the screens earlier, it's the one that looks like this, and as you've seen, it does show the recommended replenishment stopping at approximately Fifth Ave. It's hard to associate the stations with the avenues sometimes, but on that one, as a point of reference that I saw, is just north of the recommended main placement area. You can see that Hillcrest Ave kind of stands out. I'm concerned about leaving this gap in contra, which is in contrast to the statement in the executive summary, and that's on your page II, up at the top, where it says, "Beach Management Plan," I wish I had these to reference. It says, "The beach management plan is aimed at sustaining the oceanfront beach along the entirety of the town of Southern Shores." And I hope as this goes forward that the plan that you eventually adopt will include the entirety of Southern Shores Beach. As stated earlier, I live on Seventh Ave. I live there full-time, different than some of the folks who own houses along the beach and in that area. I see the beach on Seventh Ave just about every day. This past winter was the worst beach and dune erosion of my six years living here. My neighbors say it's been even longer since they've seen such devastation. The erosion is so bad, it is requiring an extension of the beach crossover. Steps are planned to be extended on the ocean side. The Southern Shores Civic Association building person, Joel Newton, has been out a couple of times, and he's already measured and got it all figured out. So that will be a Band-Aid to make it so that people don't fall off the cliff to get down to the beach. The steps will be extended, but that'll just be a Band-Aid to get people to be able to get down there. I can't help but wonder if this worst beach erosion, and I'd have to turn to the engineer here to ask if this is possible, is because there was a 2017 replenishment at the southern end of Southern Shores. There was also a 2017 replenishment of Duck, leaving the northern part of Southern Shores right in the bullseye. I can't help but wonder if fixing here and fixing here and leaving a gap has made that worse. I know in the report that you received, on page twenty-three, it is referred to where they talk about replenishing at the southern end, not leaving a gap. I know that was a smaller gap, this is a bigger gap. It seems to me that a gap causes more erosion. Also, I haven't heard any talk about, and I don't know if this is an issue, but maybe the engineers can take a look at it, the, and I love this word, the borrow area, where they took the sand from to do the Duck project, that borrow area just happens to be right off the coast of the northern end of Southern Shores. So I wonder if those two effects, the borrow area is a sand dune, if they're depleting the sand dune and replenishing to the two sides, did that have an effect on the Seventh Avenue area? Paul? Yes?
Those questions are rightfully directed to the engineer, but not to us, so I can't answer, we can't answer them for you.
Absolutely. I just ask you folks, as you work with the engineers, that these be questions that...
I also didn't advise you, you had three minutes to speak, and you, you've taken, I don't mind listening to you.
Have I gone beyond already? Okay.
We have, we haven't pushed it, but since you're the only speaker, I've kinda given you some latitude.
Uh, my, my neighbors left me out there by myself, huh?
I didn't sign up, but you can.
Ah, I don't think that's allowed, according to what the sheet said.
It's taken.
Thank you. Then in conclusion, the other point I would make, I'm not just here to speak about Seventh Ave, but I also am concerned about the area in front of the Hillcrest parking area, which is the busiest area of Southern Shores. You've got a hundred, you've got sixty-six parking spaces there, and only thirty-three at Chickahaw, twenty at Triangle. So by numbers, it's the busiest of the beach areas. And again, if you look at the mapping on the page twenty, the volume, in volume envelope, there was one area that drops back to a low area, and that's your Station 177 plus thirteen. That is right just north or south, depending on how you look at it, of Hillcrest. So the, one of the busiest beach areas is indeed one of the areas that's eroded. So my recommendations are to go ahead with the 2019 reassessment, to take a recalculation and maybe include that northern end as another transition area. It does not clearly seem to need the same amount of sand as the main placement area, but I hear that the transition area is partly to not leave a gap at the south end, let's not leave a gap at the north end. The financial planning, I, I just can't say enough, thank you very much for, you know, getting on this issue because it obviously takes a long time, and that's it. Oh, I do have some, one of my neighbors provided me some wonderful pictures. There are ser, and I'll, I guess I'll just give them to the council to look at. It's a series of pictures that are some before pictures of the beach and Seventh Avenue. I know some of you have been out to see it, and that's even better, but it does show the, the erosion and the cliff that's now been created. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
May I just say two things, so we two of your comments?
Sure, Ann.
Not that big one.
What, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Ann Scherzma, sixty-nine Hickory Trail. I'd like to request scheduling of a public information workshop or some sort of session about what has been discussed this morning. It's a lot to process. People are not inclined to go on the website and pull up Mr. Wilson's report and pour through it, and yet, there's an incredible amount of money being discussed, and it has a significant impact on everyone who lives in this town. I would like to request that that public information session be scheduled at a time when people who are working during the day can attend a 5:30 session, perhaps, maybe sometime in March, just to get the ball rolling. I agree with the homeowner here that this is all rather mind-boggling. That, that is essentially what I wanted to convey. I actually have, I know what the beach looked like fifty years ago, and I know how much we've lost. But I also am a co-owner of three different oceanfront properties, and I'm not ready to jump on the, the beach nourishment bandwagon. I'd like to hear more about it. It's an incredible cost, and I feel like things are moving faster than I would like them to move. So more information, more public input, I would very much appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anything else, council? If not, entertaining, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion's made to adjourn, all in favor? Hi, beings adjourned.